Good evening, everybody. It is 8:30. We will call this morning's meeting to order for Tuesday, July 27, 2021. Our first item is the approval of the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this morning?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Nothing online? Okay. We'll move to the approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve the second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. We'll move to approval of the minutes from July 13.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Next, we have a recognition today, and it's a proclamation for county staff. And I think this will be a well-deserved proclamation. So Steve, do you want to start off for it?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is an exciting day here at Clay County, and not only just Clay County, but for different counties across the state. Well, we certainly recognize that our employees every day are the backbone of what we do here. This board sets up the goals and the guidelines and direction, and without them, we couldn't carry out, carry forward those. And so we're fortunate today to have the opportunity to have a special acknowledgement for our employees. Earlier this month, as you may recall, Governor Walz proclaimed that July 27 would be County Staff Appreciation Day. Again, this proclamation is in recognition for the resiliency and hard work and dedication that our staff provided during the COVID pandemic and working with our community to make it safer, both during the pandemic and moving forward. So our departments, when we look over the last year, our departments went from tweaking how they did services really to changing completely the model of service to meet that standard. And I think the testament for me during this whole process was, is during the times that we were shut down by appointment, restricting some visits, I didn't get one complaint. And I think that really is that testament to the employees and the work that they did. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I'd yield to you.
All right. Thank you. That's a good recap. Commissioner Gross, would you like to start off the proclamation for us?
Whereas county staff served as the cornerstone of this community dedicating their time, skills, and expertise for the benefit of their neighbors. Ann?
Whereas county staff went beyond expectations, taking personal risks to continue delivering essential services to the citizens of our county during the COVID-19 pandemic. And?
Whereas, in addition to their regular duties, many county staff were called upon and accepted new and challenging responsibilities during the pandemic, such as expediting the distribution of thousands of dollars in economic recovery appropriations, empowering the survival of our local business community, successfully managing a deluge of mail-in ballots in an unprecedented federal election, and retooling local public health, education outreach to flatten the curve. And?
Whereas although the state has turned the corner on the COVID-19 pandemic, county staff continue exemplary work assisting with recovery through vaccination rollouts and preparing for the American Rescue Plan's multi-year recovery effort.
And whereas the work of county staff over the past year and a half have kept the doors of the county open to our community and our community safer, healthier, and productive throughout months of unprecedented global transition. And?
Whereas President Svei and the Board of Association of Minnesota Counties requested the Office of Governor Walz and Lieutenant Governor Flanagan to proclaim July 27, 2021 as County Staff Appreciation Day, and their request was granted.
Now therefore, we, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, proclaim July 27, 2021 as County Staff Appreciation Day and extend our thanks to the staff of our county and express deep gratitude for their commitment to excellence in public service during the COVID-19 pandemic.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion?
I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think that this proclamation is very important, but I think it maybe falls short on the actual work that really did go into making sure that business was as usual during the pandemic. I know that all of the people in this room and all of the departments represented that maybe not be here, it really did work to make sure that they could find alternate ways to make sure services were still rendered without too much of a hiccup. So my sincere gratitude to staff.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that. Having shown up in January being a new commissioner, I was amazed at the amount of work that got done, but that was just started. They not only addressed the needs this county had, our citizens had, that were directly related to the pandemic, but we transitioned into a new government operations center. We made the purchases and the land acquisition to get the new resource transfer station opened up. We've got a whole lot of things that were done, which were business as usual, but they were done with a huge degree of challenge put on it because of the pandemic. So I have nothing but admiration for them. I'm grateful. We've got such good public employees here in Clay County.
I'm not the commissioner. That is one for effusive language, but in talking to other commissioners around the state, Clay County really has it going on. We have an amazing staff, and there are so many things that I hear about regularly where other counties are looking towards us at being the leader in different areas. So thank you so much for carrying us through and for continuing to pour yourselves out into this work for our communities.
I guess I too appreciate them being here telling us how to do our jobs, so. Thank you very much.
Well, it's, I think this county board certainly didn't need Governor Walz to tell us to have a proclamation for our county staff. I think it's extremely important and well-deserved. I'm thankful that he did have it for the entire 87 counties in the state of Minnesota on the same day. I think that is a great deal. You know, working closely with, during this pandemic and the CARES Act committee that we had, and I think we saw just about every department head coming in and talking to us during that process about the difficulties and the challenges. One of the things that I firmly believe over the course of this is we've also learned how we can do business differently. And I think there's some areas where, thanks to all of our county staff, we've been able to think outside the box on how to move things in a different direction and maybe make changes in the way we operate on a daily basis. So I look forward with our management team moving forward to try to come up with reinventing some of our processes moving forward. And I look forward to those discussions, and they've already started, which I'm thankful for. So once again, to all of you, thank you, and this is a well-deserved proclamation. With that, I will call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried. Thank you all. All right. Back to business. Josh, are you handling this issue for, okay? Good morning, Josh. We're looking at a request to fill two vacant positions in the juvenile secure. One in the, or two in the secure and one in the non-secure? Is that?
Correct. Yep.
All right. Do you want to take it away, Josh?
Yes, thank you. We do have three vacancies, two vacant positions in secure detention. One position is a juvenile detention worker, the other is a juvenile counselor. So a grade 13 and a grade 16. The vacant position in non-secure is a juvenile counselor position, which is a grade 16. These positions are accounted for in the 2021 budget. Overall, there will be savings to the budget after payouts of these staff leaving.
I do want to say too regarding some of the personnel issues, and we did have a regional meeting last Thursday, and I intend to give a report on that during our committee reports. And significant time was spent talking about your staff, and so I'll talk about that later. But certainly, it's important that we keep these, and these are actually kind of required for your staffing deal with DOC too, correct?
Mm-hmm.
This with the secure, anyway.
Yep. Well, yeah, both.
Both are.
Units have PREA standards.
Okay.
Staffing per gender pods, programming, specific needs, so.
Any questions of Josh? Ever request to fill?
I certainly believe these are very needed positions and hope that we can find the magic avenue to find more employees to fill them. So I certainly hope that we can do that. I assume that we want these because it's secure and non-secure in separate motions. So my first motion would be to rehire the two vacant positions in the secure unit with backfill if necessary.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger to fill the two in secure. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried.
My second motion would then be to rehire the one vacant position in the non-secure unit with a backfill if necessary.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried. All right. You're good to go.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a request to fill vacancy for eligibility worker in financial services. We have Rhonda and Jamie here.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Jamie and I are here to request approval to replace a eligibility worker who is resigning from her position. She has been in this position for about a year. She actually was an office support specialist who moved into an open position. She is moving out of the area, so we are requesting the ability to replace her and then approval to backfill should we have any internal movement. This position manages eligibility in our Medicaid program. She's on the Medicaid team. They manage over 12,000 recipients on the medical assistance program for our county, and so it is a position we feel does need to be replaced to manage that caseload, so.
And that's a 50%?
Yes. These positions do receive 50% federal financial participation, so there is some funding that goes along with the position. That's correct.
Okay. Any questions of Rhonda or Jamie?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee.
I have a clarification to the motion. There was a backfill request.
Okay. Did that include the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. Next, we're refilling a lot of positions here today. Next, we have County Attorney Brian Melton here looking to fill an assistant county attorney position.
Director, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I do have a summer cold here, just very much my throat, so it might be a little quiet. So I am requesting to fill this county attorney position. This is right on the back end of one other person that left. This individual is moving away from the area. So it kind of came as a surprise. We weren't expecting that to happen. It's a budgeted position. I'd be line 23, and we are looking to fill it immediately if approved.
Move to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carried. All right. Thank you, Brian. Mr. Overbowl. Preston, good morning. I'm going to go over your budget with us today.
Yes. Good morning. Does everybody have a copy of the Highway Department budget?
We do.
Okay, good. I did meet last week with County Auditor and Administrator Larson. We kind of went through the budget a little bit and tried to identify high points and low points and areas that were, might be able to trim if we need to and that sort of thing. And we did find one little area. There was a little typo on there, so we trimmed off $9,000 there, so. What I'll try to do today is just go through our budget a little bit and try to explain it in detail. Our Highway Department budget is made up into four parts. First page is maintenance. The next page is construction, so that would be our engineering projects. Our third page is administration, and then the fourth page is the shop, which also includes almost anything related to our fleet and our fuel. And then on each individual page on the top, maybe they're all the same, but on the very top there, you got the revenues that come into the Highway Department, and then expenditures on the bottom. So with highway maintenance, in 10-3-10, 52-30, state grant, that's basically just the town road funds that come through, the gas tax dollars. The next line item down is 52-73. That's municipal maintenance revenue. Again, that's municipal maintenance dollars that come through the gas taxes. We basically use historical trends on where we're seeing those come in and kind of use last year as a snapshot and previous years to see where they're going. So our typical method is to use last year's numbers for the year looking forward, so. It seems like it's been working pretty good. The next item, regular maintenance revenue. There again, that's non-municipal, so when the gas tax dollars come through, they're kind of broken into maintenance and construction, and then in each one of those are broken into municipal or non-municipal. So municipal would be in any of the small cities, Felton, Yulin, Dilworth, Barnesville. And then the regular funds can be expended in those municipalities or outside, but the municipal dollars have to be spent within the municipalities there, so. The other thing I just wanted to mention is 10-3-10, 54-08, individuals and others. You might be wondering what that is. That's revenues from a couple of shared roads that we have, and it's in the south part of the county with Ottertail County and Wilken. So roads that are on the borderline that we share, we do the maintenance on them, and then they pay us back half for that. So it's not a lot of dollars, but you can see we budgeted $20,000 of revenue from those two adjacent counties. And then miscellaneous revenues, that's the township maintenance contract when we do work on the township roadways. So we get $613,000. And there again, when we go through that each year, that is completely off actual cost from the previous year, so.
But then it's based on a five-year average, right?
Right. Yep, correct. Yep. And then, so that's how we get our per-mile rate, and then we assess that times the miles. And so you can see the rate did go up a little bit from 583 in 21 budget to 613,000 in our 22 budget. Going down on the expenditure side, you can see our salaries regular, which is kind of a combination of our 21 full-time staff as well as our part-time staff. We've got, I think, three part-time staff that plow snow for us in winter. We've got three part-time staff in the summer that help count gravel trucks and help on the projects, as well as one guy, he's a retiree, that comes back and mows for us. When I first started, we'd have several guys that would come back and mow, but those retirees are, we're down to just getting one now, and I think the one that we have is probably looking at retiring again. So it's hard when you have a staff of eight and you have to put four of them in a mower. And we mow one eight-foot cut or 10-foot cut or so right around the Fourth of July, and that's pretty standard in cities and counties and states does that. So we do a little bit of mowing right around Fourth of July, and then we come back right after Labor Day, and then we mow the entire right away. So it pretty much takes from beginning of September through the end of October. So we lose about half of our staff sitting in mowers, but.
That's doing both sides of the road, too.
Right, exactly.
So it's 1,600 miles times two.
Yep. And we only mow our roads.
Oh, yeah. You don't do the township.
So it's about 700.
Eight hundred miles.
Yep.
1,600 miles.
Yep. We did just a little touch on our mowers. We did buy some different mowers about three years ago, I think, or so, those green Schulte mowers. They were a lot more expensive, but while they've held up really good. That was a good decision. We were using bush hog mowers, and they were just, we were having a lot of problems. At one time, three of the four mowers were out. The parts were almost unavailable, and it was kind of a scary situation, but we made a decision to go with a better mower, and it's worked out pretty good for us, so. Anyway, back to salaries there. You can see it is up about 22,000, and essentially, that's mostly just colas and step raises for 21 staff. I did keep pretty much all the part-time expenses consistent. Other than that, most everything going down there is pretty flat. I did want to touch on, and you might have a question, on about halfway down 10-3-10, 64-54. I think it says uniforms there. That one went from 1,600 up to 4,900. And essentially what that is, it's just steel-toed boots, and then that's the clothing that we allow. So every other year, the staff gets a pair of steel-toed boots. So on what we call a boot year, it's up to about 4,900, and then next year then will be a non-boot year, so it'll be back down in that 1,600, 1,700 range or so. So it kind of fluctuates, depends on the year. The other thing that we really tried to do to keep constant here and try to keep our budget in check is 65-02 road materials. We kept that flat at 910,000, same as last year. Culverts, we've been able to keep that flat for quite a few years, which I'm surprised because there's lots of culverts that keep, you know, years ago, there was a lot of concrete pipe that were put in, and they didn't, they weren't tied together, and the ground here moves, and it breaks the bells off, and pretty soon water pumps up to the top. So we have lots and lots of those that happen quite a bit, but that 30,000 has been a good budget number. We've been able to stay within that. Traffic supplies, that's our signs that our sign department puts out there. We've been keeping that at 40,000, and that's been good. Roadway maintenance costs, that's any labor, if we have to hire outside labor to do maintenance, and we kept that the same as last year at 250. And then weed and brush control, maybe at some point, we might have to think about trying to continue to up that a little bit, depending on what we hear from soil and water on noxious weeds. That did get cut about 10 years ago. It got cut way back, and we brought that back up to a level that we feel is good, but I mean, there's still lots of weeds out there. Been working with the contractor as well as soil and water, and I think it's been a good progress. Actually, I think I've got 3,000 of that dollars is set aside for flood buyouts, too.
Okay.
So if there is any of our own properties, we can spray that.
Dave, on the signs, were we going through and checking reflectability on our signs?
Right.
Talking about doing that? Is there, do you have a process for that?
That'll be.
Are you doing a section of the county at a time, or?
We'll touch on that a little bit on page four there. We do have.
You'll touch on it?
Yeah, I do have one special request on there.
Okay.
What we did last year is we borrowed the one from Cass County, and we had gotten to the board and gotten approval to replace signs, and then after the fact, went out and checked some of these signs with that borrowed reflectometer and found out that they were still good. And our sign department staff was completely amazed, but they seen the value in it. So we switched gears. Instead of replacing signs, we replaced blue fire numbers. So we kept the dollars in the signs, but we just, rather than replacing signs, it still had life in it, we went back to the blue house numbers.
Okay. All right. Okay.
And then the very last one there I want to touch on is intergovernmental payments. That one's up a little bit. And what that is, that's a sum of the expenditures for the town road allotment. It's a pass-through dollars. The Morehead Street allotment that goes to the city of Morehead, and some of that's debt repayment for 40th Avenue South, as well as the dollars that we give them just for the normal county roads that they do maintenance on within the city limits.
That 40th Avenue, how long was that contract for?
I think it's 2025. Couple more years. I think it started off at $3 million, and then with the interest on that, that carried out. It must have been, I think it was right in 2003, 2004, is when I think it started, so. And then we've got the payment to small cities. That's another kind of a pass-through thing that's in part of that 1.27 million. We've got some dollars for 12th Avenue Turnback. I think we've got through 26 or so on that one. I think that's 50,000 a year. So at some point, that'll come off as well. And then the gravel tax that is collected, that we give the share of that to the townships, that's also as part of that expenditure, so. And those are revenues that are shown either at the top of this page or on the very last page, I think, and I'll show you where the gravel tax revenues come in. If you want to flip to the next page on highway construction, at the top of the page is the revenues, and it's pretty busy up there, but there's the very first one, 10-3-20, 52-20, is state grant. That would be if the county had received like a local road improvement project grant fund. So we don't have any for 2022, but we will for 2023, that County Road 18 project that we just recently got the dollars for. That'll be reflected next year. Bridge bonding, that's for any bridge projects that we get bridge bond funds for. You can see we got $589,000 queued up for 2022 for that. CASA municipal revenues, so that's... Trying to think of why that doesn't show.
Because we're not using any.
It's on the revenue side. I'm surprised you don't show it on the revenue side. Maybe it's shown down below. That's county-state aid dollars that come through on the municipal side within the city limits. On the next page, or the next one down, is regular construction, 52-74. That's combined CASA dollars as well as township bridge funds. If we've got town bridge projects queued up. Federal grants, you can see there's 2.6 million. We do have two federal aid projects for next year, one on County Road 52 and one on 31, so combined federal aid dollars that are coming to Clay County are a little over 2.6 million. We do have a process for that within District 4, so we get together once a year with all 12 counties. We take a look at historical expenditures, who's received what, and then there's target values that are kind of based on size and lane miles and your CASA needs. And I think Clay County does pretty well in those target values. So I, you know, I won't be up for funds for a few years down the road, but, you know, we get our dollars, and then you kind of get to the back of the list.
Is that the STIP?
Yes. Yep. That's those STIP meetings, correct. And then the last one, 59-20, sale of used equipment. That's where we show if we have, if we do have a township bridge project that we do, they are responsible, max of $10,000. So if we do three of them, which you can see we have 30,000 there, we would expect that they're more than likely to be about $10,000 of engineering costs that will get built to the townships. And then for the most part, that's the only cost that they see. So if they do a 70 or $100,000 bridge replacement project, their cost is $10,000 for engineering and $10,000 for certain construction items like remove bridge that are not covered by the town bridge fund. So max is about $20,000 if they ever have to pay for one of their projects. So it's a really good program. Down on the expenditure side, salaries regular. We are up, actually, we're a little bit down there. And the reason we're down there a little bit is typically, we hire six student workers, so we're going to hire a couple of less student workers next year. We think we can get by with a few less guys, so that was kind of nice. That lowered the budget there a little bit. We did have our, we thought we needed to move up a little bit more in overtime. That's 61-07. We got that up about $5,000 more, and the reason being there is our construction work is almost all asphalt paving, and asphalt paving is long, and there's usually a lot of overtime associated with it, so we felt it was good to capture what we expect to see there. If you go down to 62-71, other professional services, that is pretty much strictly all software expenses, and they've crept up a little bit. We always kind of look in the rearview mirror and see where the trend is there a little bit, and they are trending a little up, so we moved that up to capture that. The very next line item is 62-74, consulting and technical services. We lowered that one a little bit. We've got some consulting fees there. There's always roadway testing projects that we do. There's hydraulic analysis for the bridge construction projects that we do, as well as there's asphalt testing that we bring to the state in Detroit Lake, so there's MINDOT expenditures. And then probably the biggest chunk of money there is, I think there's going to be some consulting fees needed for that North Broadway Bridge project. We put some dollars in there for that.
Will the state aid in that?
They will aid in the construction dollars, I'm hoping.
Not the study?
Correct. Yep. We could use CASA dollars for that. We typically have never really used our. Uh, we typically have never really used our, our gas tax, state aid dollars for, like, you know, we, we can pay our own staff with it. Or we can use it for consulting fees, but I feel like we've always taken a hundred percent of our dollars and put it right into the, the roads, so to speak.
Well, you're going to come back next week and talk to us about the Broadway Bridge.
Right, yeah, next week I think I'll do a little update. Um, City of Fargo had done an update to their council and I would like to do the same with, there's, uh, there's some information that we need to gather from the public and we're getting real close to getting that out, so. Towards the bottom there, uh, sixty-six-thirty, municipal construction wheelage tax, so um, what, ten years ago or so, Kevin, we deci- we, we, uh, decided to do a wheelage tax within Clay County. Uh, it's ten dollars per registered vehicle and the county gets about nine dollars and seventy-five cents. We literally get almost all of that dollars and, and we put it there again, we put that money right into the roads. Uh, the city or the county at the time, the the commission decided that it would be a good idea to share some of those dollars, so we share thirty percent of those dollars with, uh, the city of Morehead and the rest of the small cities. Uh, the city of Morehead, and it's based on population, so we kind of have three different categories. I think it was over fifteen thousand, which would be city of Morehead, so uh, they got a, I think they get about half of the thirty percent. And then the next tier would be five thousand or, maybe it's fifteen hundred, I think it's fifteen hundred or greater. And I think there's four cities there, so it'd be like Dilworth, Barnesville, Holly and I think I missed someone. Maybe Eulon, and then there's six smaller cities that, that share on their, the final tier on that.
And so those, um, you know, for, for new commissioners, those, those cities can, can choose to bank that money?
Correct.
Up to, is it seven years, Dave, I think?
Yep, we, we gave them up to seven years to do that. Um, so a population over fifteen thousand is the city of Morehead. Uh, the next tier is fifteen thousand to one thousand, and that's Barnesville, Dilworth, Glendon and Holly. And then population under one thousand is Comstock, Felton, Georgetown, Hittitlal, Saban and Eulon. So the, uh, the smallest tier get five thousand dollars per year out of the collections. Uh, the middle tier fifteen thousand to one thousand, they get ten thousand. And then the city of Morehead roughly gets about seventy thousand, so.
And that, those altogether represent about thirty percent of the total?
Correct, yep, thirty percent of the total that we collect on the wheelage tax, so. Um, I think the idea was the fact that they've got registrants out there too that maybe are not all in certain areas, so we, we shared some of that back and it's worked out really well. I think everyone has at some point had a project that they've requested. Uh, it's maybe not enough to do a big project, but after seven years, it might be enough to at least help out a little bit, so. So we've got a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, budgeted for, um, expenditures for the wheelage tax. New county construction funding, that's four hundred thousand. That's the levy dollars for, uh, we typically have always used that on county road projects, but the last several years, we've had to use that to supplement any of our projects that we've been, been doing, so that's our, that's our levy dollars for construction. Uh, the next line item, sixty-six-thirty-one, that's the county share of the wheelage tax, the seventy percent. And then the next, uh, big number down there is road and bridge construction. And that's a combination of any bridge bonding expenditures in the, uh, county-state aid highway projects, any town bridge projects and any federal aid projects. So essentially, if you go up on top and if you add it up to five-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, the four million and the two-point-six million, that, it's an equal number, so what comes in goes out, so. Uh, next page at administration.
Before we get there, uh, forty, or sixty-six-thirty-two. Um, there's a significant difference between the proposal in twenty-two and twenty-one.
Right.
Is, is that just the ti- the?
It's strictly based on, essentially you can think of like our five-year road plan. So some years are, we, we, we're up to seven million there, so if you have your pla- plan, if you look at the bottom of the blue number down there, you can see how that number fluctuates from year to year. Uh, probably the biggest deal is we've got that influx of federal aid. So if you, you know, we don't get two-point-six million of federal aid every year, so if you pull two-point-six out of that, you get kind of close to that four-point-six from the previous year. And same with bridge bonding, you know, some years you do a lot of bridges, some years you don't. Uh, town bridge funds, again, if we've got five town bridges and previous year we only had one, that would make a difference in that number.
Thank you.
Okay. Next page, administration. On the, uh, revenue side there, the fourteen hundred, that is strictly those hundred-dollar annual overweight permits, so if a business is within three miles of a ten-ton roadway, they can get a permit so that they can do business. Um, moving in utility permits is the next one. That's our, we kind of guess how many utility permits, you know, people are putting cables in the ditches. Or if there's a, a lot of moves throughout the year, been selling a lot of, uh, construction permits and overweight permits. And then the next one down, fifty-eight-thirty miscellaneous revenue. Uh, that is our joint facility administration fees that we charge as the city and the state for our building out there. Uh, it's the administration only. It's about thirty thousand dollars of Ann's salary that the, we recapture from our, our partners. Um, on the expenditure side, uh, ten-three-thirty, sixty-one-oh-five, salaries regular. We're up about sixty-three hundred dollars there and, um, there's, I think there's six of us in there. It's, uh, Justin, myself, our two office staff and then Ann, so with steps in cost of living, I guess that went up a little bit. Um, the next one down, sixty-one-oh-seven, um, salaries overtime, that's overtime for our highway accountant. Um, next one down I wanted to touch on was telephone, sixty-two-oh-one. That's made up of our, our cell phone expenses for our department as well as the shop internet, so. That one has crept up a little bit. There's been no change, but we just, we're, I guess, must be seeing the, the cost for both of those jump up a little bit. I wanted to just explain a little bit on sixty-two-sixty-one, accounting and auditing. That's our, uh, state audit expenses when they audit our, our books. Uh, the next one down, sixty-two-seventy-one, other professional services. You can see that one dropped quite a bit from nineteen thousand eight hundred to fourteen thousand. We were involved in a very large upgrade with, uh, our software RT vision. And it was a five-year, you know, they needed sixty thousand dollars based on the one work we did of them. We paid that over five years, so this is the first year without that, so. That upgrade cost went down. It looks like on sixty-three-fifty-one, building insurance and liability. It looks like our insurance jumped up a little bit, about just, uh, just under five thousand dollars. Um, the same with sixty-three-fifty-four, workman's comp. Those costs have crept up a little bit. And then sixty-six-oh-four, equipment, over five hundred. We have historically always kept that about a thousand dollars, but last year we did have a, uh, some office furniture. We bought a, a new desk that is, was well over twenty years old, so that, that cost of that one-time cost went off, so we're back to the thousand dollars we normally have. The last item is our highway equipment, maintenance and shop. Uh, at the top of the page, miscellaneous revenues, fifty-eight-thirty, that is the joint maintenance facility expenses, so non-administrative related expenses, it would be the other operating expenses that, so it was about eighty thousand dollars that we recapture from the state and the city of Morehead. Um, salaries regular is up a little bit, thirty-five hundred dollars and uh, there's, we only have two staff on there, so combined for the two went up about thirty-five hundred. Uh, I wanted to touch a little bit on sixty-three-oh-two. Um, equipment repair and maintenance, uh, we went up five thousand dollars on that and I think what we're seeing there is we're still seeing some repairs to our plow trucks is in the winter time, we just have a lot of wiring issues and I think we talked about that a little bit when we bought our new plow truck. We went with a different kind. Um, so we looked at last year's and the previous year's expenditures and um, two-hundred thousand just didn't seem like enough, so we upped that just a little bit. If you go down to sixty-four-ten, fuel lubrication. Uh, we did keep that flat and every year I kind of try to work with Lori on that a little bit to guess what we're going to see there and, um, I realize the price of fuel is jumping up. But it is so dependent on the kind of winter you have. If you get a lot of snow and you're out there all the time, it doesn't matter if the fuel's two bucks or four bucks, you're just, you're burning a lot of fuel, so we, we took a gamble that, uh, it looked like we had been under the last couple of budget cycles, so we kept that flat at three-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Um, cleansing supplies at nine thousand, we kept that the same. Small tools, we kept that the same. Uh, if you go down to sixty-six-oh-four, that's the equipment over five hundred. We nor- we, last year we were at twelve thousand. Um, it, it seemed like when the guys need something, it's like a large pressure washer or an air compressor. It's, it's well over the five-hundred-dollar minimum threshold to be in this column, so we would like to jump that up to fifteen thousand. And then to the right of that is where you'll see that ten thousand dollars. That's the, uh, new request. And that is for that sign reflectometer. Uh, we borrowed it from, uh, Cass County. Um, I've wanted to get one for years, but they're not cheap, as you can see, but the one time that we used it last, this past spring, we realized the benefit of it. And I, I think rather than always trying to borrow theirs or share theirs, I think it would be nice to have our own. We could go out at any time and check certain signs and we might find that we can keep our signs around a lot longer and I think it's a savings for the county. I guess I, I'm really, really excited about having the opportunity to possibly have one.
When we borrowed the sign reflectometer, did they charge us for that?
No. No, they're, 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 have such good working relationship, it's, I guess it's more of a convenience to have our own, so we could use it more often, I guess. I think, I think our guys would use it more often. Uh, we could continue that, down that road. They have not said anything about not continuing to share, I guess. And then maybe the last thing to touch on at the bottom is our internal service, sixty-six-oh-seven. Um, our, we have so much high-dollar equipment, um, when we work with the auditor's office, we kind of started this internal service program kind of in the hole, so we, we've been trying to catch up a little bit, so there's a a fifty thousand dollar increase there, um, to, for the replacement of our fleet. And then maybe on the back page, there's just three or four little items there. Um, if you look at ten-eight-oh-five-five-zero-seven-two, gravel tax removal. That's the three hundred thousand dollars that we bring in for gravel taxes that, you know, s- some goes to the county and some goes to the townships, as we talked about earlier. And then the next, uh, couple down, five-zero-nine-one, that's the wheelage taxes and you can see that. So this is the revenue side and then the expenditure side was on page two, but uh, the seventy percent share to the county is three-sixty-three-eight-one-eight. And the thirty percent share to the city of Morehead and the ten small cities is one-fifty-five-nine-twenty-two. And then right to the, the very last item, capital improvements, ten-eight-oh-five-six-nine-five-five. There's fifty thousand dollars showing there. That's our, maybe you could call it debt repayment for the Holly landfill shop. So solid ways to actually put up the dollars for that facility. And then the highway department, based on the share, we, I think our share was sixty percent based on how much size we're using in the shop. And then we're just making a payment back to that department for that, so.
Any questions, Dave?
Thank you for your update. I wanted, but I wanted to go through it in detail, so if there's any questions.
It's fine. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Justin. Law enforcement. All right, Sheriff.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, we as well met with, uh, with the county administrator last week along with, uh, the auditor to go over the budget to see what we could do and how our budget overall looks. Um, I guess I will just kind of dive right into it. For twenty-twenty-two, one of our larger increases, you'd probably see with the salaries. I'm sorry, we'll start with revenues. Um, we did increase our revenues a bit as it pertains to, um, our pistol permits. Uh, we had changed that last year to go to fifty thousand dollars uh, for twenty-twenty-one, but we're seeing just an increase in pistol permits again. Um, and as you can see, May year to date, we're already, uh, at fifty-two thousand, five-eighty. So, uh, we decided to propose for twenty-twenty-two, eighty thousand dollars in revenues for pistol permits. Uh, we're also hopeful that we'll get another five thousand dollars from the state for police relief aid. That seems to be increasing every year as well. And then, uh, the additional revenue would be forty-five thousand dollars from um, our Morehead Police Department contract for the building. On our expenditures, some of our increases, again, uh, as I had mentioned before, would be the salaries. Uh, that would to, uh, include the twenty-twenty-one requests that we had with that new hire. Um, I, I do not foresee us spending the three-point-two million in salaries for twenty-twenty-two because we do have two individuals that have indicated they are going to retire. So I would venture to guess that number is going to be slightly less, just we have to budget this way. Uh, because we have not seen any letters from them at this point.
Yeah, cause when we, cause when we did that new hire, we were taking into consideration some, um, some re- potential retirement and then we looked at the possibility of still having to maybe add a position or something at that point, right? Cause you originally requested two?
Only requested one.
You requested one?
Only requested one.
Okay, okay.
You know, depending on what happens here, of course, in the court facilities and things like that, we may have to look at that. Um, but we don't know what's going to happen at this point with that. And then that would obviously change some health insurance increases and para and things like that as well, but we do have to budget for those, um, for those folks as we have them here today, because we do not have any, any letters from them at this point. And then we did have some slight increases in our association and membership dues. Um, they, they went up two thousand dollars. Our meals are, uh, related to overnight travel. Um, or meals not related to overnight travel, sorry. We've been consistently under budget there. Our, our number of transports have always gone up, therefore we put that, uh, at an increase of a thousand dollars. Uh, we did increase as well our gas and oil budget, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, we also increased salaries for our pistol permits because the, our office staff continues to do more and more pistol permits, spending more time on that, so we did increase salaries um, for that, but that also would come out of the revenues that we do obtain from, from the pistol permits. And then the last increase that we had had was, uh, we had a per-mile contract with Valium Orchardary Services. And that would be in two-oh-six, two-oh-six-sixty-three-thirty-one. Um, they increased their mileage by a quarter, therefore we did, uh, increase that line item. Again, that's two-oh-six-sixty-three-thirty-one by five thousand dollars.
Page is that on? What page is that one on?
Yeah, I don't know, we're kind of missing that here. It's, we go from sixty-three-oh-two to?
Two-oh-six.
Top item is nine-one-one.
It is under the medical examiner.
Gotcha.
Oh, okay.
Our total increases after the revenues has been subtracted would be two-thirty-two, two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. Again, um, that is with all the salaries factored in there, but as I, as I indicated, I don't believe we're going to be spending that in salaries just because of the, you know, retirements that, that are coming up.
Well, even if you cause you, you had talked about potentially a couple of retirements, right?
Correct, yeah.
And, and even if, if that did happen and those were replaced, you'd probably be at a different scale.
Yep, it'd be as, it'd be a different, uh, step on the grid.
A different step, I.
Yep. Yeah, it'd be a different step on the grid, so we're going from that higher step where those two individuals are at to a much lower step.
So the three-point-two is kind of a worst-case scenario. I mean, not, not, I don't mean a worst-case scenario, but that, that's if everything just stayed as.
As it is today. Yep, yep.
And no retirements?
With no retirements, correct. And if, if they do, we're looking at, you know, potentially between fifty-five and sixty thousand dollar savings if those two individuals were to retire.
Didn't you have one, didn't you have one that left for active duty too or something?
Yep, yeah, we do have one that's currently, um, active duty, but his salary this year would be, um, Mike Files, who is, who's the deputy we replaced him with. That, that was more of a budget-neutral type one for this year.
So there were, yeah, so there was a new hire and then there was the replacement, or, or the change. I, I knew there was something in addition to the one new one, that, and it was that active duty issue.
Active duty, yep.
Yeah.
And he would come back, we're hopeful, um, or hopefully he comes back November of this year, latest would be February of next year. Any, any more questions or anything? Um, moving on to our narcotics task force, that is, uh, two-oh-five. Um, our Lakes River Task Force was disbanded.
Page number?
That's on page, um, eight, right after the nine-one-one, right above the medical.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think we're going out of order here, cause I'll let corrections and Gabe kind of bring up the tail end.
That's okay.
Um, so the two-oh-five narcotics task force, our Lakes River Task Force was disbanded by the state due to their interpretation of, uh, our contract. They kind of kept moving the goalpost on us. Uh, this was a reduction in about thirty-one thousand dollars in total revenue for the task force. Um, but beginning in twenty-nineteen, we did join the U.S. Marshals Task Force. But beginning in twenty nineteen, we did join the U.S. Marshals Task Force with our Street Crimes Unit. So we do get approximately eight thousand dollars in reimbursement from them per year. And then we do have a second grant as well with the DEA. And we currently get around, you know, seventeen thousand five hundred from them. We did have to have one deputy removed from that task force this year for nothing more than the DEA wants those deputies over in their office kind of butts in the seats over there. And it's very difficult to start working local drugs when they're sitting over there. So we, we need to ensure that our local drugs are being worked as well. Therefore, we're going to have him, one of the deputies back over here, you know, in our office working local narcotics and local drugs rather than at the federal level. We will still have one person at that federal level to where he will take any federal type cases that do come up. And I am exploring a potential other type of grant with another federal agency, if that is possible with them.
So is that reflected in your numbers?
We did reflect that in the numbers this year, knowing that that was, that that was going to be that way for twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
So are we still involved with the street gangs unit?
We are currently still involved with the Street Crimes Unit and our, our deputies still do work with them. And our deputy that is on the Street Crimes Unit is also part of the U.S. Marshals Task Force as well. So he does have that, that federal credential.
A follow-up on that, how has the legislation in St. Paul changed the ability for that Street Crimes Unit to operate in Clay County?
Yeah, it's, it's definitely changed for us. We're still able to go to the North Dakota side and assist them with, with, with cases and do our own surveillance over there, but they will not come over to Minnesota because of that law change. So it has, it has hurt us a little bit on this side because of it. We're, we're starting to use our patrol staff a little bit more, maybe our general detectives a little bit more to assist with some of those types of, of cases.
Which, then you have to ask if the investment makes sense for Clay County citizens. If, I mean, I, it makes sense, the street crimes, don't get me wrong. It's been a really good thing that we do, but if we aren't getting reciprocal aid from North Dakota, it's hard to see us have folks over there working on it, but they're not going to come over here. I think that's the argument that we've talked about with St. Paul. But at some point, if that doesn't change, we might have to have some hard conversations about that investment.
I, I think something that doesn't change though is the investigation piece, right? I mean, that still, that still goes on.
The investigation piece has changed because our North Dakota entities will not come over to assist with investigations or, or search warrants and things of that nature because of the law change. And it is something we will have to, have to look at and see how the, the lawsuit plays out in St. Paul. The four large law enforcement groups have filed a lawsuit in regards to this use of force law. So we'll have to see how that all plays out.
I'd find it very unfortunate if we couldn't still do a mutual cooperation with street gang issues. There's, a river doesn't separate.
It does not, no. No, it does not, and it is unfortunate. So hopefully we can, we can get some assistance with this, this lawsuit.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Muggo?
No, thank you.
I'll move on to the, the two oh six, our coroner or medical examiner again. Just a slight increase there due to the Valium Orchardary Services contract for transports. I'm going to hit one other before I turn it over to Corrections and Emergency Management. And then the last one would be two fifty-one, and that would be our dispatch. The twenty twenty-two budget for dispatch was approved by the Board of Authority. Page twelve, thank you. And our Clay County share, ten percent, is five hundred and eight thousand. We do get Clay County nine one one fees of a hundred and forty-four thousand for our net share being three hundred and sixty-four thousand. Forty-eight percent of that is reimbursed by our, our local cities.
How much was that?
Forty-eight percent for a hundred and seventy-four thousand seven thirty-eight would be reimbursed back. And then the rest is the Clay County share for fifty-two percent.
Okay. Commissioner Muggo.
Thank you, Sheriff. I had seen in a local paper that we have some cities that are contracting with additional counties. And I think it, cities have to do what they have to do to get service that they need, but I'm troubled if we have Holly and Barnesville working with Becker and Wilkin on, on those dispatch services. That, that amount that we pay into dispatch will have to be absorbed somehow. And I understand that it's probably not until the next fiscal year, but what are we doing to prepare for what that may mean for our contribution?
Yeah, we have been in ongoing conversations with those cities to try and work with them to, to make things, things a lot better. And I know Chair Campbell and Commissioner Ebner have also been working with our North Dakota entities in an effort to make things a little bit better for us at, at the dispatch center level to ensure that our calls are getting answered and our radios are getting answered and things like that. So we do have ongoing conversations at this point. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some of that stuff fixed and corrected in the future so they don't have to seek other services.
But even in, Wilken County just acted on, on hiring additional dispatchers to absorb what Barnesville's needs are. So, you know, I, it seems like the, I mean, we're getting the answer from those small cities. I don't know if there's much less to work out, much more to work out if they've already taken action on that.
We're, we're going to be meeting today on it and hopefully we'll have more answers after today. We're going to have, have a discussion with our rural cities today and, and Chair Campbell and Commissioner Ebner and County Administrator Larson. So hopefully we're going to have more answers after today, but as of right now, I, I don't have an answer for that.
Yes, Commissioner Ebner, yes.
Sheriff, on those issues, are the, the mayors aware? Have you had a conversation with them about the impact this would have on our record management system? Their e-ticketing, their ability to send case files to the courts, their ability to send tickets to the courts? All these things are either going to take a pretty large investment on their part to upgrade other counties' facilities, or they're not going to be able to do that, these routine tasks. Are they aware of the consequences of a decision like that?
Well, I think that's going to be part of the conversation today as I wasn't, I was unaware that, that Barnesville had got to the point where they were actually having a contract with them, with Wilken County. I know there were some ongoing discussions with Wilken County, but I was unaware that they had gotten to this point.
Are they going to be able to, and I don't see how they could do it with a cell phone, even if you, if you got down to towers. But my understanding is any of our communities that go with another county, if someone dials nine one one, that's going to go to the Red River Regional Dispatch and have to be transferred to whoever, whoever they're doing business with. Are they aware of the impact that's going to have on response times?
Again, I think that's going to be part of that conversation. That does happen even today with, you're on the interstate. Sometimes a call does go to the State Patrol and it gets transferred here. Or the call goes to our dispatch center and then our dispatch center does transfer it to the State Patrol as well.
It's concerning, and I, I hope we can have a good dialogue on that.
Sheriff, you can continue.
That's all I have. I will turn it over to either Justin or Gabe, who would ever like to go first?
That's okay with you, Justin.
Go ahead.
Mine is pretty easy. The emergency management budget does come out of an overall emergency services budget. So some of the numbers are a little skewed because any of like CARES dollars or COVID fund code costs and stuff come out of that. So my portion of that budget is a hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight. Really, the only increases in mine are point three one percent to salary. The largest would be point, or two point nine eight for health insurance and then point three for para and point two eight for Medicare. So just the, the normal step increase, increases in, in those deals and cost of living. Nothing really changed as far as my budget line items. There is one, you're going to probably notice that is, I think I'm at, as far as what it's budgeted for, I was, I'm at three hundred and twenty-seven percent of that. It's a thousand dollar budget item for emergency management supplies. But we did have a couple purchases that were coded under there that came up as a result of the potential for protest and civil unrest that were made out of there that weren't budgeted for it. But those were regarding our drone operations, which are used heavily during those situations. So back in two thousand twenty, when we had the civil unrest events in Fargo and Moorhead, we were able to, through a trial period, use a streaming service with our drone. So that gives us the capability to livestream the video from the drone feed into the Emergency Operations Center or a web link can be sent out to the sheriff or incident commander or whatever to do that. Anyways, we had a free trial on that in nineteen. This year, obviously, we didn't qualify for a free trial again. So I purchased that streaming service in anticipation. That, that was a five hundred dollar annual fee. And then also, we had a request and a need for a seventeen hundred dollar purchase of a, it's a battery charger for the drone batteries. It's a rapid charger, so that, that basically gives us twenty-four hour operation batteries. With the amount of batteries we have, it can be charged and ready to, you know, be switched out. So the drone really is only down for the timeframe of changing out batteries. So other than that, that is really the only, I'm over in that category or in that, on that fund code, but I am still under budget due to COVID. There wasn't really any trainings, travel and things like that, so I'm well under budget for that. And that's all starting to, I guess, get going again. So next year I would look for that, you know, things to kind of level out in my budget line items there. Any questions for me? I can answer them.
Questions of Gabe?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin.
Morning. So I'll start with our revenues. We are decreasing five four two three, which is board and care of prisoners, by forty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. We just haven't reached our projections with, with that fund the last couple of years. What that is, is boarding inmates for other agencies. This last year with COVID, it made it really hard to be able to board anyone. We have been boarding a couple here and there for the U.S. Marshals. We've had an individual in custody, I think, for the last three years for them. So there is still some revenue, so we decreased that, that by the amount. So the projection for the, the sixty thousand two hundred and twenty-five, that's basing on averaging three individuals for the entire year. And we think that's, that's definitely doable. The concern is, is we'd like to take on more, but the concern is coming out of COVID here, we're going to see a large increase with our own inmate population and it's going to be difficult to take on a bunch of borders at that time. The next decrease, we decreased five four two seven huber fees. This is largely due to, we just aren't seeing the number of inmates qualifying for work release. And so those, those work release fees, we haven't hit those projections for the last couple of years, even prior to opening the new facility. Just, we're seeing a lot, our population is mainly felony assaults, felony high-level drug charges. You know, we've seen a lot of murder, attempted murder cases in our facility. Just not seeing those DWI cases and those, those low-level offenders serving in our facility. The next revenue account, five four three one, prisoner phone commissions. We increased that by seventy-seven hundred and ninety-five dollars just to make it an even eighteen thousand. As just a, a baseline this year, when we put the budget together, we had already reached twelve thousand in phone commissions for the year. So we felt that, that estimate would, would be obtainable. To move to expenses, we're seeing an increase of fifty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars to regular salaries, which is six one, six one oh five. That was just largely due to having a lot of newer officers and having more frequent step increases. Six one oh six, there's a decrease in part-time salaries by twenty-four dollars, which is very minimal. Health insurance, six, six one five four, we're seeing a decrease in, by twenty-four thousand dollars. That's largely due to the turnover in employees and the, the change in county contributions for, for healthcare. Para, we're seeing a forty-eight hundred dollar increase just due to, I'm sure, salary increases and. The same thing with social security and Medicare. Six two seven one, other professional services, we're asking for an increase of fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. It's due to three different things. Scheduling software that we, we use in the facility. It's an online-based scheduling software, makes it very easy for the staff to know what their schedule is, submit time off requests, just track, track different things related to the schedule. That would be a thousand dollar, one thousand forty-four dollar increase to, to that budget. The next would be in that other professional services would be to Eaton. Eaton Services are UPS, are uninterrupted power supply system. And what that is, is it gives us a backup between the time the power goes out and the generator kicks on. So we don't just lose all security electronics, all of our computer equipment. And so that annual service contract with them is ten thousand twenty-two dollars. This last year, it was covered by the IT department and they've asked us to take on that, that. It, it's very an essential piece of, of equipment that we need to make sure gets maintained. If the power does go out, and we've had quite a few, I think just in the last week and a half, we had a power outage, I think campus-wide. For that period of time between the generator kicking on and, and the, the power going out, that, there was about a forty-five second to a minute window. If we didn't have controls over our doors and stuff like that or lost all of our computers, it would ultimately eat up more time trying to restart all those computers, making sure doors were getting opened and, and closed that needed to in certain areas versus there is no interruption then in that, in that service. The next increase to that other professional services would be a forty-five, forty-five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That's a two percent cost increase to the Lakeland Mental Health Contract that supports our river project. We're very appreciative of, of the county board's support of that throughout the years and it's, it's a big service that, that we would like to continue to have. And so that two percent increase is part of that other professional services. The next increase is to six two nine six, prisoner care. This is where all of our medical costs are paid out of. It's an increase by fifty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars. The large portion of this increase, when, when budgets were put together, we had looked at, Julie and I had looked at what we had spent for the year so far in twenty twenty-one. We averaged that out. That came to be about forty-seven thousand six hundred dollars per month is what we're spending on medical, whether that's hospital bills, clinic bills, medical supplies for, for the medical department, our medical contract, medications for the inmates, all of that comes out of that fund. And so we just don't see that decreasing any. We see that that will probably maintain through twenty twenty-two. So we just times that forty-seven thousand six hundred by twelve and, and carried it through to the next year.
Yes.
In fairness, Justin, you really had tweaked that by a hundred thousand dollars a year prior. You had reduced that. And so I appreciate the fact that you're trying to find what that happy medium is and, and not over budget, but certainly not under budget because it is so important, so.
Yep. And then the other small increase to that, that line item would be a two percent increase to the men correctional care contract, which would equal eight thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars for twenty twenty-two.
Justin, that, if I can, that medical, when we pay that, do we have any, any knowledge of, of how many of those inmates may have, you know, because of, they lose their, they lose their Medicare?
Yeah, we don't really track that, who does come in with, with medical assistance or any type of.
MA, yeah, yeah.
MA. It, it's hard to tell because the, the inmates themselves, they don't always understand that they lose that assistance when they, they come into the facility.
I guess, I guess I was just asking how, if you could track it because that's a constant message that we send, you know, to the state and to the feds is the fact that, you know, that, that costs the counties considerably, you know, by the loss of that, of that MA. And I don't know if there's any, I don't know how we, if there's anything that? And I don't know if there's any, I don't know how we, if there's anything that we can do to help us build our case as we, you know, look for legislative ways to improve that. I don't know, it's just something to keep in mind.
That's something we can definitely look into tracking and seeing how we can track.
Obviously, it's got to be something you can do legally, and you, questions you can ask and questions you can't ask, but, okay, that's, thank you.
And I do know, we do get MA rates for all of our hospital visits and clinic visits already. We work with Sanford Health, or whether it's Ascencia here locally, so they do bill us MA rates, so that does benefit us drastically.
You just don't get reimbursed.
Yes, yep, that's the big thing, yep. So the next line item with an increase is 6421, jail supplies. This would be an increase of $14,314. And the large reason for this increase would be, when we opened the facility, we had to purchase, we purchased all brand-new linens, bedding, clothing, uniforms, I mean, all that kind of stuff for the inmates. We're now about three years into that, or will be when the 2022 budget comes out. That stuff is really starting to deteriorate, just with the constant use of it and the constant need to wash it. So rather than coming forward every three years with a drastic increase, we think we would cut that into a third of what we would need and just ask for an increase of a third of that into our budget, and every year, it would just maintain that same amount. So really, I laid it out in our notes, what that all would need to be and what we'd be purchasing. I do think we can get a little bit better rates on what we're buying, just due to the large number of quantities and knowing what I got for rates when we opened the facility. But this is what the advertised prices were for these products, and so we just feel it's a necessary increase.
So Justin, as I look at this, you're, in the 2021, you had budgeted $31,630, right?
Yep.
And according to this, you've used $28,505 year-to-date through May?
Yes.
So, and that's, and that's with your population down?
Yeah, so.
Or doesn't the jail population come into play here?
It does. You know, uniform, or the inmate linens and supplies that I just mentioned, that does come out of that account, but that's not the sole thing that comes out of that account. We pay for other things such as, like our non-medical-use gloves. So just conducting daily jail activities, the staff use gloves. And those gloves, to this year, have cost us $23,647 of that budgeted line item. Glove costs doubled this year, and now that the supply chain has increased again, we have not seen those rates drop.
Has that changed because of COVID?
Yes. And I think the, Julie and I talked about this, we thought maybe we would see a decrease in prices when the supply chain got better. We now think that everyone got used to paying this rate, and this is what the manufacturers are just charging now, and I don't see them dropping the rates.
Have you ever looked at cares for that, Steve?
That's something that we could look at, Mr. Chair.
And I want to reiterate, this wasn't gloves that, we bought more gloves due to COVID or anything like that, it was just an increase in those, in that cost.
Yeah. Just line them in.
Yep.
Yeah.
So there are other things that come out of that line item, like we pay for every offender that comes into the facility, we give them a hygiene kit, those hygiene kits cost us money. We buy, you know, razors for them to shave with, and shaving cream, and all that kind of stuff throughout the year, and all that adds up to a couple thousand dollars, as well as just other little, small miscellaneous items that throughout the year just budgeted to a couple thousand dollars worth of stuff. And so there is a little bit of money to buy small quantities of bedding and linens and clothes and stuff like that, but to be able to replace them on an as-needed basis in larger quantities just isn't within our budget. Other than that, my only other increase would be a new request that I'm asking for.
That's the $43,000?
So for 2022, we're asking for an additional correctional officer. This correctional officer would be assigned special duties as a court officer. It would be an increase, a total increase to our budget of $62,767. That includes salary insurance, para, social security, and Medicare. With the way the courts are going, they're moving, during all of COVID, we moved to an ITV setup, so all of court is being handled within the jail. That's not something that the jail was ever really equipped for or staffed for. Our responsibility in the past has always been get the inmates over to the courthouse, use the assistance of the court deputies to supervise those individuals, and we were responsible for the transport of them, just kind of back and forth, and then our staff would take notes as available of what happened during those hearings if they were able to stay there. We were then, with COVID, all the hearings now happen within the facility, so our staff in the jail are handling all of those hearings. With us coming out of COVID now, the courts are moving to a hybrid format, and so it's going to be a combination of ITV and in-person hearings. And with two individuals, two court officers on our staff to be able to do that, two just isn't enough to accomplish all those duties, as well as their additional duties to take people to outside medical appointments and things of that nature. So to be able to adequately staff those needs, we're asking for a third correctional officer with specialized court duties assigned.
Okay.
Overall, I think before the new request, our increase is a 0.92% increase. After that, I think it's just below a 2% increase to the overall budget with the new request. Any other questions?
All right, well, I think that kind of concludes your presentation today, right? I think, you know, obviously, we're going to be looking through all of our budgets, and we'll look at the new requests, and we'll be making, we'll have to make these decisions sometime in September and let you know. And it may be too, that as we move forward, we may want to have you back to make some other clarifications if we have questions, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you have one more item here?
I do, I actually have two more, but I think there's a break in between, so.
Well, let's take care of both of yours, so you don't have to hang around for a break. So let's start with your request to fill vacancies for two full-time correction officers.
Yeah, so I received two more notifications of resignation. Their last day is this coming Friday. The individuals are moving out of state, just different career paths, so requesting to fill those two positions. It is within our budget, it is part of our DOC staffing plan to fill those positions.
We have a request to approve.
I've moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? There's not a backfill issue with these, right?
No.
Because they're all, yeah, okay. Yes, Commissioner?
You have been short-staffed for a while. Can you speak a little bit how your staff is holding up with the additional strain of being so short-staffed?
It's been a struggle. I know they're getting very burnt out. We have recently spoken with some of the staff, and we've implemented a schedule change to hopefully alleviate that. One of the big things we were hearing is our old schedule had a combination of working eight-hour days and 12-hour days. The staff would like more days off, and so we are moving to a 12-hour workday schedule that will give them more days off in the meantime. So in a seven-day period, they're working seven days and off, or in a 14-day period, work period, they're working seven days, not all in a row, but then have seven days off also in that pay period as well. It's something that they really express some interest in, something that we've done in the past. There are some challenges with it when it comes to, you know, backfilling some positions because we have to meet our minimum staffing plan every day. And so there are some challenges with that, and we're working through those challenges. But I think in the long run, this will make staff happier, giving them some more time We are, we have been recently working with the Minnesota Department of Health and local Clay County Public Health to eliminate our quarantine process at the jail. We are seeing a very high number of vaccinated staff and vaccinated inmates compared to the rest of the state. The state was very impressed with our efforts to vaccinate inmates and get our staff vaccinated, so they agreed that we can eliminate our quarantine process. We'll still have some steps and protocols in place to mitigate some risk with that. But with that happening, it allows us to shut down two of our housing units, to be able to reduce our staffing plan a little bit, so that we can, instead of saying, hey, you can have the day off, we're going to have to find someone else to fill your shift for overtime, we can now just give days off and not have to burn staff out to fill that overtime, or to meet our minimums, say, okay, guys, to meet our minimums all this week, we need, you know, X number of overtime shifts filled. And that's been the big burnout, is just the number of overtime shifts we've had to fill. In fact, myself and my assistant general administrator have been picking up some of those shifts to help alleviate some of that stress.
So then, my final follow-up is, you talked a little bit about reduced revenues because we're not boarding some of these additional inmates. Did the staffing crunch play into our reduction in that, or just the availability?
I just think with the budget deductions and the revenues, the boarding and care, that was a big one. You know, when we opened this facility, we had always anticipated having some contract with boarding individuals. COVID threw a big wrench in that, and then just where we currently sit with our staffing has thrown another wrench into that. I think, you know, coming up, we are backgrounding quite a few individuals, so I do think that this is a very temporary thing. We're, we have two individuals that are hired and coming onboard, and we're backgrounding an additional seven for full-time, three for part-time. So we are getting there. Right now, what we're trying to find is how do we fill kind of the gap in between leaving employment and coming done with training? So, but as far as like the boarding, or the huber fees, again, we're just not seeing the individuals that qualify for work release coming into our facility and serving, whereas we did in the past.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you, Justin. We're going to move on to item number 10 on the agenda while we.
We need to vote.
Pardon me?
Vote.
Oh, yeah, that's right, okay. Yes, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's the same. Motion, Carrie, there was some long dialogue there, I forgot. All right, Justin, let's do item number 10, so you don't have to sit here through the break. I know that Steve was going to do an overview of the, but we can kind of still work through that. So let's, we have, if you look at attachment H.
Yeah, so, I can't remember if it was last week or the week before, I met with the American Rescue Act Plan Committee to, came forward with a request to reimburse us for some ITV equipment that we had purchased for court. I believe it was that committee's request that I was in favor of that and come forward to the full board here, and request for those funds to be reimbursed out of that fund. It was for a total amount of, I believe, $8,155.51. That was equipment that we had purchased. It was our second ITV setup that we had purchased during COVID, just due to the courts moving to all ITV and courts for in-custody hearings.
Yeah, so that was something that I think our group recommended, and it certainly was 100% related to cares, or to COVID, I should say, so our committee definitely recommended that we should move forward with including that payment reimbursement. So that's the recommendation of our committee.
Chairman.
Yes.
I move that reimbursement be approved.
I'll second that, it makes a lot of sense.
Motion by Commissioner Abinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's the same sign. Motion, Carrie, thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
And we will take a five-minute break. We are back, and we will reconvene, we'll take item number nine, overview of American Rescue Plan. Administrator Larson, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners again. As you see from the agenda and the item we just had, we do have a few different American Rescue Act funding requests before you this morning, and we've had multiple conversations about the American Rescue Act, but I just thought I'd just do a real brief overview, kind of of the process a little bit. The interim rule is 151 pages, and so I'm going to try to condense that into seven slides. And so, so, but here we go. I just wanted to touch base, again, the American Rescue Plan was part of a $1.9 trillion emergency legislative package, again, to deal with COVID-19, public health crisis, and also to look at the potential spurring the economy as we move forward. Again, as part of that, there was multiple different categories. We had unemployment, we had rental assistance, we had funding to families, tax credits, just to name a few. The portion that is impactful to us today is the portion on state and local fiscal recovery funds. And that, as part of that program, $350 billion was set aside for state, local, territorial and tribal governments to respond to the emergencies and bring back jobs. When we look at those different areas, again, the goal was to have a substantial infusion of resources to meet the pandemic responses and rebuild a stronger economy. And they laid out, just like they did with cares, they laid some criteria specifically that they could do and utilize the funds for. There are five, but as I said, there's 151 pages that also further lay out and provide feedback to that. And so when we look at those five, usage for those funds is to support public health expenditures by funding COVID-19 mitigation, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, and certain public health and safety staff. Address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, including economic harms to workers, households, small businesses, impact industries in the public sector. Replace lost public sector revenue using this funding to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue experienced due to the pandemic. Provide premium pay for essential workers, offering additional support to those who have borne and will bear the greatest health risks because of their service and critical infrastructure sections. And then investments in water sewer broadband infrastructure and making necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water, support vital wastewater, stormwater infrastructure, and expand broadband internet access. And I think, again, I think one of the other things, when it goes back to the state and local fiscal recovery funds and what is allowed to utilize, that's built on top of the first cares fund. So the cares fund and the criteria that we are allowed to utilize is also captured in this. Really, the goal is, was trying to widen the net here and allowing the local governments to better utilize knowing what the needs are in their communities and widening that net. And so, as we've talked about, Clay County received roughly $12.4 million. We received $6.2 million of that back on May 19th, with the second payment coming within the next year. Again, this is a little bit different than the cares funding. We had to work directly with the federal government and the U.S. Treasury to receive the funding. And cities and townships under 50,000 people will receive funding, but they will come through the state of Minnesota, and there's a separate set of processes that they'll have to go through to get that. And we've touched on that a little bit during our board meetings. You know, one of the challenges with the cares, the cares program, it was approved in March. The state of Minnesota didn't determine how we are, how it was going to be distributed until the end of June, and we essentially had from July, essentially July to December 1 to figure out how to spend that allocation. Fortunately, for this time, the parameters are a little different. It goes back to March 3rd of this year and runs through December 31st of 2024. And so the funds must be incurred at that point, and the, but they mustn't, they don't have to be expended until 2026. And so we actually have about a five-year window to completely spend those funding dollars. Again, this board has determined that we will continue to use the American Rescue Fund Committee, or cares too, is what we've caught, called a lot of times here. We began meeting a number of months ago. Again, based on that timeframe. Again, based on that timeframe with CARES, we were meeting two, sometimes three times a week in planning. I think the committee continues to evaluate the funding opportunities and the guidelines that the U.S. Treasury provides, and we're really trying to be very deliberate in planning. And so we haven't, if you recall, fairly soon into July of last year, after the funding was made, our committee came forward with some proposals of categories, and we may be looking into doing that in the future. But as I mentioned, the board really wants, or the committee really wants to have an opportunity to evaluate. The Treasury, just to kind of give you an idea, the 151 pages came out as far as the interim rule. Then the U.S. Treasury provides a frequently asked questions document that answers additional questions that are brought in across the country. With the CARES funding, in nine months, there was about four, there were four updates to that. And the updates allowed us to do a number of things on the county level that we wouldn't have been able to do at the beginning of that process. The U.S. Treasury has already come out with four, four updates to that, to their frequently asked questions, which is going to be helpful in determining how we're able to spend those dollars. And again, we'll be looking to have categories for discussion at this board at a later time. Again, there are reporting requirements that will go to the federal government. There's also going to be a single audit process that will be responsible to participate in. And at last meeting, Commissioner Campbell mentioned Darren's been working through both at the CARES process and also now with the American Rescue Funds and application process that really aided us in that audit process, getting all the information as it happens. And so when it came to that audit, we were able to have all that information ready to go. And so I know that Darren has the application here, and Commissioner Campbell had mentioned about wanting to kind of show that to you guys. And so Darren, if you want to come up and-
Okay, so the first part of the process is the form that I created for tracking the funds. And what I normally do is put the, whatever is approved in here, the categories that are a dropdown, and these are the five things that Steve just talked about. And then once you select one of these, then a second dropdown will come down, and it'll give a little bit more specific topics that that money is going to be spent on. They would have a short description of the expenditure, the amount of the expenditure here, any other comments that might describe that expenditure, and then we can also upload files as required. And those are usually what I'll upload, is either the request for the funds and also the board action from the minutes. So we have that in there as well. The funds can be categorized in several different ways, waiting approval, approved by board, projected, partial. These I'm probably going to look at a little bit more because I might not need some of these, but they're there for now, and I can make changes as we go along. Throughout the first one, it was kind of a trial by error, but this one, I learned a few things, so we'll make it a little simpler. I'm not learning as I go this time. And then, of course, the person that's submitting the funds, their phone number, and then the department is also a dropdown as well. And I also added outside agency here as well. So once that is filled out, then what it does is it feeds these charts. This is the totals. I can't really see all of it, but this would be the first allotment of funds that we've already received. This will be the second allotment of funds, the total allotment of funds after we receive everything, and then the total spent. I also have a balance sheet where these numbers I just put in divided it equally by each category, but these will be separated-
Just as an example.
As an example, exactly. And then the status of funds is also, so the total funds, the remaining funds, which will give us a running total of everything. And then this one is awaiting approval. So the stuff that you would approve today, for instance, Justin's thing that you just approved for ITV, that'll move to the approved by board in this column here. So if you approve everything today through Justin and Dara and Joe, then those funds would move over. And that's, these charts are all fed by that form that I can export that data into this Excel spreadsheet. And so that is the tracking mechanism right now.
Well, it's, we asked Darren to be able to show this because it's really a good tool for us to have, and it's very beneficial in also. It's extremely important as we, when we approve these, that we're following the guidelines and we're being able to show where within the guidelines, the reasons for the approval of it and why it qualified as an expenditure. So Darren, thank you for your work on that. It's an excellent tool.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, Steve, are you-
Yeah, that pretty much wraps it up. Again, part of why we wanted to do is to, you know, is that, is to address this today as we did, we do have some items that we're going to be addressed, have addressed, and will address here shortly. And so with that, does anybody have any immediate questions?
Thank you, Steve. Item number 11, we have a request for funds from the American Rescue Plan from Dara Lee with the Clay County HRA, and she is online with us. And I believe you have, what, four board members here, Les? Good morning.
Morning, one and all. I'd like to start this with a statement I made that three of you have heard me make many times before, the two commission members over here have not. I worked in many volunteer organizations on a board, and out of all the groups I've worked with, Dara Lee is by far the best manager-director I have worked for. And this is broadcast before, and it's broadcast again. And for the rest of the presentation, she does the work.
All right. Good morning, Dara.
I may be turning my camera off if my audio is garbled. So is my audio clearer this way?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to leave my camera off. I said so you don't see me blush, and hopefully this will remain clear. But Les is present, as are others, in case you have any specific questions. Thank you, Chair Campbell and Commissioners, for allowing us to come to you today with this request. We did make a presentation last week to the CARES II/ARPA Committee, and we are coming forward with two of those requests today. They are both allowable expenditures under the provision for eligible responses to negative economic impacts on the pandemic. As referenced before, the frequently asked questions have come out, and one of those questions was what type of services are eligible. Some of the specific activities included rent, mortgage, utility assistance, counseling to prevent or end homelessness, as well as home repairs and weatherization. So our requests are directly as specified as an eligible expenditure under ARPA. There is a request for $100,000 in order for us to help complete the job of ending child homelessness within Clay County. As you saw from our background materials, almost half of the people that we serve are children. Currently, we're serving over 1,100 children in Clay County, and those are all low-income children with a majority who are people of color. We also have been doing rehabilitation work throughout the county. Since 2008, we have utilized funding through the county to leverage additional resources, and we would like to continue that with our $80,000 request for rehab. So we are available to answer any questions you may have about this request, either through me, if I'm not garbled, or some of the folks in the audience.
All right. I think we've got the board's attachment letter aye regarding this, and you had the background information. As Dara mentioned, she did come before our committee and gave a good detailed report on the requests. Our committee felt it was extremely important to move forward with two of the four items that we felt were important now, and Les and Dara and those of you. I think the other two, they're still on the table. They haven't been excluded, but because we're so early on in this process, there are some of the items there that we wanted to see how that might fit in with other things that we're going to do as well. So, huh?
State will be doing so.
Yeah, and what the state will be doing as well. So, but the recommendation is certainly to move forward with the $180,000 for the two, one for the, to help end the youth homelessness, youth and family homelessness in Clay County, and that $80,000 for rehabilitation in Clay County for the home. I think that's an excellent program, by the way. I wish we could even do more because it ends up paying, and it, I think it improves local neighborhoods. So it's got a lot of benefit to it. So that one I've been excited about for a long time. I think that's an excellent opportunity for us. But that's, you know, if the board has any questions, those are recommendations. As Darren mentioned, when he showed us his process there, we're hopeful then that that $180,000 can move from a proposed to a board-approved and move forward, and then that can help the HRA move forward with their plans and start implementing that work. So, if there's any other-
We're going out with information, all the agencies and stuff, that there's money available. I mean, you already got requests, so how did they get on the approval?
Well, they, yeah, I mean, they, obviously, different agencies probably are aware of the dollars, and, you know, Steve can add to that, but, you know, our intentions are to still, and that's further discussion about knowledge. You've asked questions before about how do townships know and all this type. So we're, that's another thing that we're working on right now through our committee to help the education process. Thankfully, we don't have a six-month period of time that we have to spend all this money this time, so we can have the time to do it correctly. But do you want to add on to Commissioner Gross's question?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, I think that in this case, I think many agencies are being directly contacted by either the state or by their, like, HRA Association, contacted Dara, to notify them. And so a lot of those, a lot of the early conversations that we've had have come because of either notifications, conversations that we've had as committees, or their local associations have reached out to them and made them aware that there aren't the direct allocations for them, but there's the potential availability through the county.
Is there a limit on an application? Like, if someone comes in, they want $5 million for a project, do we, I mean, I realize you're going to look at that, but is there a limit on applications? I mean, and if they do put in for a million, $5 million, do you say, okay, we'll give you $3 million or $2 million, whatever? I mean, is there a limit on anything like that?
Well, I, you know, I think the limit that we have is $12 million. And, you know, so, I mean, if one project came through that was so important to the county, you could probably say the whole $12 million could go to that one deal. But that's highly unlikely, obviously, to happen. But I don't think there's a set dollar amount. I think we always need to make sure that everybody understands that there are multiple needs, and we're not going to be able to solve everybody's problems 100%, but we're going to try to spread this around the best we can, based on the guidelines that are presented to us by the federal government.
Well, I guess just not being on the committee, we, I don't know what-
Yeah, yeah, but there's no doubt-
I talk to people, what do I tell them, you know, just put in whatever, and then you guys are going to decide-
That's right.
-how much they get, you know, and I just don't.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, when, you know, through the CARES process, for example, we had a number of agencies that once specifically reached out to us as part of our committee and establishing the funding requests or the categories that we're, as a committee feel can be the biggest impact for the bucks, we have reached out, had our staff reach out to different agencies. And then those agencies then come in with a, with the presentation. Some of them have, are asking for one thing, some of them are asking for multiple things. And then what we do as a committee then after that is we evaluate the request, and then we make a recommendation ultimately to this board in determining what we feel would be the best to move forward with.
I guess my main concern is, you know, we're getting $12 million, and I would definitely hope that we're going to be able to find place for this $12 million, that we don't send anything back to the state, you know? They're giving us the money, let's utilize it, you know? But I didn't know, do you wait for all the requests to come in, or, okay, now you start picking away at it and picking away and disapprove some requests, and then later on you find out, hey, I still got $4 million to give away here, so I just-
So, you know, Commissioner Gross, oftentimes, government can be accused of operating slowly. When it comes to spending money, I don't think there's as much worry about how, about the speed of spending the money. So, and again, there's plenty of needs going out there, and I think the most important point is that our committee takes the time to get as many requests in as possible and see how it fits in.
Are we as a county, are we coming up, is there a committee as a county, or are we just telling each department to come up with something? I mean, I see Justin came up with something, so is each department working on something, or is there, is your management meeting or whatever?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, we've had ongoing conversations, just like we did with CARES, with our, with our management group, you know, with the new changes, we've made them aware that there's, you know, some, maybe a wider net this time. So if, in the event that they have items that weren't addressed in CARES, that they could potentially look at that. So that is, that is something that we do constantly talk about.
I'm sorry to drag this out, but I'm just trying to get information on that.
No, I think, you know, when we, when we got into the CARES, you recall, we established different categories. And then through the process of that, we kind of allocated certain dollar amounts to each category. And once that category, once you've filled it, I mean, that was-
But you had a time limit, you had to have your applications in by a certain time.
Right.
Here, it just looks like, well, this started to trickle in a little bit, and we'll start using some of these funds, so.
And maybe if I, if I may, in your, in your information that Dara presented, why we felt that specifically the HRA issue was important to bring forward has to do with, you know, the HRA has ability to levy funds through the county with your approval. And they're in the process of establishing their budget for next year, there certainly were some impacts on their budgets, just like everyone that COVID had. And so in looking at this fund request, this would have a, have an impact that they've indicated that if we were to approve this, it meets the criteria, they wouldn't be looking to come to us for a levy this year and further impact the citizens. So that, that's why, I guess, we brought, felt the importance of bringing this forward as quickly as we did. And so it would have some pretty immediate impacts, both for the county and for the HRA.
I mean, I agree, and I agree with this request. I mean, I've got no problem with this request. You know, just, you know, but if people don't know yet that I can request money, you know, and you say, okay, now we gave away, well, this one would be $180,000, you know, are they going to have a, the next person will go, oh, well, we already gave away the money. Too bad, you were too late, you know?
Yeah, I think we're going to do our best to notify anybody who might be able to be qualified for relief as a result of COVID. But, you know, if you look back to the, to the first CARES, and, you know, our goal at that point in time, as it should have been, first and foremost, was to help keep our businesses operational. If you even recall our proclamation today, it talked about the significance of the work that was done through CARES to make sure that our businesses saw the relief from being shut down. And now we have, we have some of these other components that are coming up. It's going to be a long process in this, and we're going to, we're going to have some more dialogue about getting in-depth as to what you're talking about, Commissioner Gross, and that's how we can get the word out on the availability. Commissioner Gross, and that's how, how we can get the word out on, on the availability of this. So that, that's to come. We've, we've had those discussions, we had it in our last cares meeting, uh, that we had. So, but I think you'll, you'll find that some of your answers will come soon as far as how we're going to handle that. Okay? I know it's difficult when we, oh, yeah, Commissioner Mosho.
I think part of the issue, thank you, Mr. Chair, is that we make sure and, um, and do it as, as fairly as possible. And we've talked about this with the Cares Act. Thankfully, this round, we don't have the abbreviated timeline like we did before. And so we're being deliberate in having conversations with entities and organizations that do the work within the county, uh, to evaluate how COVID affected them and to make sure that we can help our community move forward out of the pandemic as, as swiftly and as effectively as possible. Um, you know, that you talk a little bit about, is there a committee to evaluate that? That, that committee that Commissioner Campbell and I were appointed on really has had those conversations to make sure we're identifying areas and then that may be an issue, and then making sure staff is following up with them to see if there's any needs areas. That's a little bit of, of maybe how the request from our jail administrator came, came out, is that they had identified after the fact that they needed to make sure and, and get those ITVs so court cases could be heard, uh, effectively during COVID and then had, uh, cost needs because of that. But, you know, we certainly, if you as a commissioner are hearing from people that there was an issue that maybe wasn't addressed or a need area that, that wasn't addressed, make sure to forward that to Steve, and then, and we can talk about that at that committee level. But that's kind of the, the, um, sounding board that we've got organ, organized to make sure we're addressing concerns.
I've got no complaints or anything about it yet. I'm just, I'm trying to acquaint myself with the system right now.
Well, I, I think Commissioner Mosho said it right. I think if any, any of U.S. commissioners, uh, do, um, even get some questions asked of you, even if, you know, I think it's appropriate to share that with Steve. Steve puts together our, our meetings that move forward on, on the Recovers Act. But another, another thing that's really important that we're going to be looking at is, we're talking, right now, we're talking about this twelve million dollars, but there, there are significant other dollars that are available in different ways through both the state and federal government that, that people may or may not go through us on, but they may qualify at the, right through the state level or through the federal level. So, we're trying to still get our hands on all of that stuff, and, and, you know, we're, we're maybe going to look at getting somebody that can help with that research on that as we move forward, when you're talking about that significance. So, that's yet to come. So, so there might even be some opportunities for people who may not qualify at the county level, but they could at the federal or state. So, we just don't have all those answers. Now, but, but going back to what you talked about from our county managers and all of that thing, I think there, there has been some discussion. And, and as you know, being on our capital improvement committee, one of the things that we're requesting here is nine hundred and some thousand dollars of things that are going to be, that we're going to act on after this one, that are definitely related to, uh, American Recovers, that it's going to save all of our county taxpayers on at the same point in time, it's going to, it's going to help deal with some other COVID-related issues. So, so we have had that dialogue amongst our managers and, and Joel will be given the facilities report on that next. But, so back to this, I don't know, Les, or if you have any com, I think, uh, we certainly, our committee certainly supports the request right now, and I would look for, unless there's any more questions on that.
Do we need two motions?
I think you can incorporate it all into one.
Then I would move to approve both of these items for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion?
Just a comment, can I?
Yes, Commissioner Mosho.
I appreciate the board's support of this. I, I know that the committee really felt that this was something that was important to get out of in front, as has already been said before, but specifically to, um, be prepared in case as children go back to school in September, uh, and as eviction moratoriums seem to be ending or not ending kind of in, in jumble, that, uh, the HRA is prepared to intercept any, um, needs that may arise because of that. So I appreciate the HRA for being flexible and having a multi, multi-step approach to any approval of these funds, but also being ready to help our youth as needed.
Thank you for those comments, and I, uh, based on the outcome of this, I do want to say that, again, those other two items that were requested through Dara's letter, through your, through your board, uh, those still are on the table. They'll, right now, they'll be considered pending moving forward. So there's, you know, just so you're aware of that, it's not, there's no denial of it by any means, but it's just a process that we're going through right now. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you, Dara.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to appear garbled and remote. Have a great day.
Yeah, thank you. You too. All right, next, request for funds, American Rescue Plan, Facilities Director Joel, and that's Attachment J.
Yes, good morning. Uh, just to follow up, I guess, on this theme that we're talking about here, um, um, it was a good time. A few weeks ago, we, we approved the capital improvement plan, and at that time, we approved that plan, uh, with the, um, the red items that are in your attachment spreadsheet. We've taken those out, and, and they clearly qualify for American Rescue dollar funding. So, um, today, I guess I'm asking to approve those projects in the amount of nine hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty, um, to be approved through those funds. Um, just important to note that I'm asking to approve these, these, uh, but I'll be coming, if approved, I would be coming to the board individually, which each project, you know, because we have procurement policies with quotes and bids and stuff. So, so just asking to approve this plan today, basically the second half of the capital plan, so.
All right. Commissioner Kaylee.
So, to clarify, we're just approving the plan. We're not actually approving each expenditure.
Uh, what we're doing is, he's requesting that we approve the nine hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to be allocated from.
From those ARPA funds.
From the ARPA funds.
Right.
That's, and, and then he'll come back individually as each project, and his amount, his first one is the next item.
Exactly, yep.
It's actually the next item. So, so he wants the overall, to complete our plan, because otherwise, if we didn't do that, these things are still going to be important, and we'd have to go back and relook at the original capital improvement bond requests that we have.
Thank you.
So the funding is a different source. So, I hope that answered your question.
Yes.
All right. And what's the board's wishes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve these expenditures.
Okay, we have a motion to approve nine hundred and fifty-three seven fifty, uh, the American Rescue Act funding for projects, qualifying projects at the county level.
Correct.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Abinger, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Okay, and then we'll move in. Joel, you're gonna, you're requesting to move forward with the courthouse heat pump replacement project.
Yes, I'd actually want to add to that, too, um, Mr. Chair, that it's, it's a tower, courthouse heat pump tower replacement. So, just to add that in there, that's what it truly is. Um, and like you say, this one in the very beginning was, if you recall, one of the critical projects that we had kind of set aside in the very beginning before the bonding was even approved. Uh, and so anyways, that was one of these critical projects. I'm here today with two quotes. Um, this project is, is, uh, clearly, clearly connected to the ventilation system, which there's clear language in there that that qualifies for American Care dollars. So, um, I, I'm requesting to approve it. Uh, we're springing a lot of leaks up there, so we'd like to get, go with that project. I have two quotes, Chiller Systems at seventy thousand four ninety-six fifty cents, and I got Dakota Plains Mechanical at fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty, and I request to move forward with the project using Dakota Plains Mechanical.
Any questions, Mr. Joel?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mosho, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
All right, item number fourteen, request from owners of R&amp;H properties to refund credit penalty paid for late payment of taxes. Mr. Olson, good morning. I'm sorry for the delay in, in this. We, uh, we kind of had a busy.
It appears we're not asking for enough money.
We, yeah, we're, uh.
You guys are big speakers.
We had a, we had a, we had a busy morning, and there was a, yeah, yeah.
Um, we're Bob and Helen Olson. We've been farmers and taxpayer over in the Holly area for early sixties, I guess, so.
Six years.
Uh, we, we, we think we've paid a lot of taxes, and, uh, then we, the city talked to us about development, one of our quarters, and, uh, farming was a hell of a lot easier than developing, but it has turned into a nice development, at least we think. I'd have, I invite you to come down and drive through there, any of you, when you get a chance. Uh, but anyway, in the fall of, of, uh, two thousand.
Twenty twenty.
Two thousand, twenty thousand twenty, yeah. Um, somehow our check got lost.
The taxes.
The taxes. Uh, and, uh, sometimes I even bring it up because it gets pretty expensive when you had a lot of lots that, and I used to bring it up here, but, you know, we were running into that COVID thing, and, and, uh, so we decided, well, we'll put it in the mailbox. And Helen and I do remember driving down and her getting out and putting it in the post thing.
In the mailbox.
And all of a sudden, at the end of October, then we were balancing our checkbook, and, oh my gosh, that check hasn't been cashed. So, I talked to the treasurer's office and talked to the post office, and the post office started investigating, and still haven't heard anything. And, uh, I talked to the treasurer's office, and they said, well, just to make things simple, why don't you pay the penalty, and we'll talk to the commissioners later. Well, it got delayed because we ran into the COVID thing, and then I started having some medical problems on the first of the year. So that's why we're kind of late. But what we're asking is if we would reconsider that penalty that, that we paid. And, uh, I don't have no proof that I put it in the mailbox, except.
Except I remember doing it. And the reason that I always, outside, okay, he turns, we turn left, and it's just easier for me to run over there and put it in there. And I, I remember that. I don't remember everything anymore, but I do remember doing that.
Mr. Mosho.
Thank you.
Anyway, our request is that if you'd give us credit, we did pay the penalty. We paid the tax, and we paid the penalty.
The tax.
But if you'd consider a credit, because we don't think it was our fault, and I'm not blaming you, but, uh, we turned the money over to the government, you know, with the mail office or your office. And, uh, I don't have any proof, but, uh, that's what we're asking.
All right. Commissioner Mosho.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Bob and Helen. Thank you for coming up here. I don't know what's, um, more impressive, the fact that you remembered walking to the mailbox, or that you balanced your checkbook two week, within two weeks of writing the check. Because that, that is certainly something that I am not great at. Um, Mr., Steve, do you know what the penalty amount was?
Yeah, the, the check, the amount that was paid was one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents, and.
Was that all?
What's the penalty amount?
Penalty.
Yeah, that's the penalty.
That was.
That's the, the whole amount is a penalty?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the whole amount was something like fifteen thousand or something like.
With the, with the tax.
Okay, I got you. So that, that is the penalty amount.
I, I, I think in, I think in, in fairness, the way our, our board has handled this in the past is, is we, we do consider waiver of penalties. However, we don't, we have never done the interest. We have ne-
Never done what?
We've never done the interest.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's, I mean, it's, that's going to be a very, very, very.
Yeah.
Small amount. But I, just so, just so you were, the policy has been to deal, you know, under qualifying circumstances, the waiver of the penalty portion. So, so where you're, where you have down here the one thousand one fifteen sixty-eight in this, in this attachment L, I, you know, I would, I would, I would entertain a motion to, to waive the penalty portion of that, whatever that is.
And where I was going for that, I, I don't know if you need the motion to include what the total would be, because, because it was such a short amount of time before the Olsons found, um, out that it hadn't been cashed, I would assume that interest would be small. So my.
Another point is, though, is that was interesting. I mean, the, the penalty was assessed on the fifteenth of October, five hundred dollars or whatever it was. And then ag- again, fifteen days later.
Yeah.
At the first of the month, so.
Okay.
Uh, it, the, the, the fine, uh, was assessed within fifteen days. And, and like you said, it's lucky that, uh, we balanced our checkbook when we did.
Agreed, agreed. So, um.
And we realized that, uh, we don't have the proof. It's.
Yep.
So where I was going, I certainly, um, this would, I believe, fall within because of the pandemic, but also because, um, he, um, Mr. Olson had a request to come before this board before the first of the year, at the first of the year, had some health issues that they were going through. So I would make a motion to approve all of the penalties on their, um, request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mosho, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion?
I got just one comment on the thing. I just, sorry. I've been more, a bit cautious as far as, the reason I say October the twelfth was a federal holiday, there's no mail service that day. So, uh, you know, in future, I guess, leave the mail in your mailbox overnight and stuff like that is problematic, probably. But, uh, that was a federal holiday that day, so.
All right.
Next time, we're going to drive up and down.
There you go.
It's probably sitting in some post office bag or way down.
Well, I use that green envelope, not very heavy paper. I can see it going through some sorting machine.
Yeah. All right, well, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Your request is granted for the penalty portion.
And I would note, I would note, Mr. Chair, Lori Johnson is watching the board meeting, and she said the figure of one fifteen, or one thousand one fifteen sixty-eight is all penalty, no interest.
Okay, very good.
Wonderful.
All right, and so you had said in a credit, so that will be actually returned to you.
Whatever works.
All right?
Yeah.
Those dollars will be returned to you, yep.
And we could have added a couple zeros if it had been in the program.
Well, you know, yeah.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for, thank you for coming today.
We, uh, we invite you to, if you're in the Holly area, to drive out and take a look at the development.
All right.
Looks nice.
About eighty houses in there now, and, uh, we're looking at adding sixty more lots. So, that helps your treasurer.
Yes.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we, uh, we're going to kind of have to see if we can do a condensed version of our committee, because we are running late, and we have an insurance meeting to take over this room at eleven. So if I can ask, uh, I'm gonna, Commissioner Abinger, I'll start with you this morning, your committee reports.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Um, on Wednesday, the twenty-first, I had a couple of diversion authority meeting, meetings, uh, the finance committee, uh, as well as public outreach, outreach committee. Um, the public outreach, we had a report. We're trying to sync the new P three, the Red River Valley Alliance, sync their communications, media releases, and everything else with that of the, of the diversion authority. Uh, on finance, I had a, some MOUs presented that we discussed that are going to be part of my report on the main, uh, on our, on our, uh, diversion authority board. on our, on our diversion authority board meeting, which I'll get to in a minute. Later that day, and I'm sorry, on following day on the twenty-second, we had the West Central Juvenile Center Board Meeting, which I'm going to defer to our chair. I know he has some things he wanted to cover and we were at the same meeting. So I'll pass over that. And Thursday, the twenty-second, had a diversion authority board of directors meeting. We discussed closure on the three P contract, which should be in August, with financial contracts in October. General Counsel Shockley presented an alternative dispute resolution board proposal, which has been tabled. And we approved a land exchange for upstream mitigation area. And that, oh, and then Monday, myself and Commissioner Kaylee both met with Mayor Carlson of Morehead, discussing some upcoming issues. And that completes my report.
Mr. Kaylee.
On Tuesday, the twentieth, I attended the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council. We got reports from a lot of the different mental health providers in the area. It was noted that Lakeland Mental Health currently has zero people on the waiting list for Rule seventy-nine case management. Mobile Mental Health is looking to hire. They continue to be quite busy. C C R I currently has a waiting list for arms due to staff turnover there. On Wednesday, the twenty-first, I attended immigrants, refugees and local government outreach in Rome, Minnesota. It was a webinar put on by the Center for Rural Policy and Development. They shared some interesting ideas on different ways local governments have reached out to their immigrant populations to make sure that they have a voice in local government. On Thursday, the twenty-second, I attended the CAP LP Board Meeting. The main item on the agenda was to go through the audit and no material weaknesses were found there. One change noted is that now, as they receive multi-year grants, those grants will be noted as income in that first year on the, on the date received, they won't be spreading that dollar amount over the, if, you know, if it's a five year, they won't be spreading it out over those five years. So when you look at their revenues and expenditures, there'll, you'll see some more fluctuation, but it's because of that. And then attending the, the meeting with the mayor, as Commissioner Ebinger noted. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Hey, Tuesday, we had our PIC, Personal Issues Committee. Two items were discussed there. Extension service was requested, an extra additional help or the move of position from half-time to full-time. Told them make that part of their budget request. And next Friday, we talked about was remote work policy, and I think we've got a lot of work to do in that one yet, so. That'll be coming forward yet. There'll be more discussion on that one. Thursday, attended the legislative update that Senator Ekin and Mark Ward and Heather gave that. There was a good update in what happened, what has happened so far. In fact, Jenna was there also with me that, there, they discussed the, what they did the last year, two hundred and fifty million dollars was added to hospitals and to the workers. Border City Tax Credit continued on and the enterprise zone in the border cities was discussed. Clean air emissions were discussed. They indicated that it was held off till the next governor election, but I see in this morning's paper, it looks like he approved it already. So can't go by that, I guess, so. There'll be a bonding session on the, on the flood protection and there's going to be tax relief in two thousand and twenty-two because they feel they've got a budget surplus. So there may be a tax relief in two thousand and twenty-two. And then last night, I attended the Dilworth City Council meeting. They had a hearing on the Seventh Street project that they're doing. It's a mile-long road that goes through Dilworth that they're working on. A lot of discussion, a lot of people there talking about that project and that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I attended the July meeting of the Red River Water Management Board, business as usual, but we did have a update from the D N R on fishery habitat goals. Good work happening with that organization. That evening, I attended the July Planning Commission meeting. We did have four applications for new solar, solar energy farms, so we did approve those and then had one C U P and then three additional I U Ps. Those did pass, all of them. I attended the land management of the diversion authority meeting last week. A really good meeting, continuing to hear property acquisition updates. We did have a discussion on a alternative dispute resolution board. And that resolution board would be a sounding board of several, fourteen different member entities that would take disputes that landowners, once the, the project is in operation, if landowners identify different areas that they may have not been fairly compensated for or something got missed, it would be a avenue for them to dispute issues with a maximum dollar amount of up to fifty thousand dollars. And from my perspective, would be a great avenue for resolution and dialogue that would avoid court cases. That did, was recommended with only one vote in the negative to the diversion authority board. I did watch the diversion authority board and it was tabled at that. It's my understanding that all of the recommended organizations are people that are willing to work fairly and advocate for all of our landowners. And I feel like this is a really good, a really good step. So it's my hope, I know two of you are on the diversion authority. It's my hope that you will continue to advocate for all of those member entities specifically because they have an acute awareness of the needs that arise with our hydrology in the Red River Valley. Other than that, had good updates from both the Cass County Joint Water Resource Board and M C C J P A. The next day, I had the solid waste advisory committee. We did have a good update from our solid waste department on all the, the different activities going out, construction out at the landfill is, is wrapping up and, and looks great. Had some discussion about Minnesota, the M C, M P C A, specifically talking about our grant that we were awarded and the additional hoops that have been added to jump through in order to get to those funds. So since this board has made a significant commitment in dollars to make sure that our solid waste transfer station is, is funded, it's my hope that we can work through any kinks that may be to get those funds pipelined swiftly. I attended the essential health, had a community health needs assessment conversation with community stakeholders. I attended that meeting and looked, I was going to forward it to all of you, but I do see that you were all added into the email as well. Important information from community partners. I did forward that to Metro Cog as well as Matt from our planning and zoning because I think there are nuggets of that that we can apply to our own plan as well. Yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Center Board of Directors Meeting. Good updates specifically from both the Otter Tail and Clay County Collaboratives, as Commissioner Kaylee had talked about. The access indicators continue to show favorable access. But there are a couple different issues at other local sites that we're dealing with in terms of access. And then did talk a lot about the referral agency and client survey results. Yesterday, I attended the solid waste construction meeting. Transfer station on the site there, talked a little bit about some of the, the changes in terms of codes that we've talked, needing to add in and, and have made a couple different changes. Not anything that would affect the building delivery, but some areas where we can save some dollars. And then talked about the timelines that will go forward. And then talked about Fifteenth Avenue that remains closed, I believe, as of today. I'm hopeful that that will open up. We will need to have some sit-down conversations with the city of Morehead, but also Public Works or Morehead Public Service. There we go, Morehead Public Service in terms of, Clay County was fixed the issue that was not identified. And we'll need to figure out who's going to reimburse Clay County for doing that, if that's fair. And then last night, traveled to Hitterdale. As you recall, the board was very adamant about making sure that rural, rural residents had an opportunity to attend in-person meetings. So Metro Cog and our planning department was in Hitterdale last night to discuss any issues that people may have on the comprehensive plan. It was, the attendance was a little light, but I'm still thankful that we had that opportunity. Tonight, at six thirty to eight o'clock, we will be having another public, public comment opportunity in Barnesville at the watershed office. Please attend. You don't have to attend the entire thing, but just stop by and provide your feedback. It's really important as we move forward to see what the goals and wishes are from county citizens. So that concludes my reports, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I tried.
Thank you. Our insurance committee is going to run a little late.
Well, I tried.
All right, but that's not your fault. All right. So on, on the twentieth, as Commissioner Gross talked about, we did have a personal issues committee. Two items were on there. One was the request from extension and it's a new request. And so we, obviously, we told them that has to be considered along with every, all other new requests that we have moving forward. I know they're anxious to, to sign a new three-year agreement. There's no recommendation yet from, from the PIC committee regarding that. There's certainly some questions. We heard, we got a proposed remote work policy from the Strive Committee and I think your management group, after listening through that, we kind of sent it back. Saying it's kind of not ready to come before our board yet, so more to come on that. On the twenty-first, I had several meetings. My first one was a Prairie Lake Solid Waste Meeting. The item of note that's of significance was we, we did approve a new insurance policy that has been a headache for us. And our, as you know, before, our past premium was about five hundred and thirteen dollars. And now we're, we've got a new, new policy that has been proposed that's going to be two hundred and twenty-three thousand. So a significant savings on an annual basis, so. And we still have to pay M C I T two hundred and sixty-eight thousand for the first seven months. And then the remainder of the year will cost ninety-three thousand, one ninety-five for a total of three hundred and sixty-one thousand for two thousand and twenty-one. And we had budgeted three hundred and seventy, so, or actually, four seventy for two thousand and twenty-one. But it's, it's looking good for two thousand and twenty-two. We have some really opportunities there for savings. Land management, and by the way, the, I mentioned that the operations manager last time, you know, kind of quoted saying, everything's going so good, alls we're doing is burning garbage. This time, he did say that it's the first time that he's gone on vacation and has not received a call. So the plant is doing really well. So, so I told him I was going to share that with you guys as well. The land management, the diversion authority was also that, public outreach was that day. I'm, there's not a whole lot there. There was just planning for future markets with the P three, three group and their outreach team. Commissioner Mojo talked about the dispute resolution board. Actually, the reason that it was tabled is there's, there was questions from members from Fargo and Cass County regarding one entity that's part of the fourteen. And that entity happens to be the coalition from down south. And they're, they're the only entity that isn't a formal government entity. So there are some questions regarding that and, and should they or should they not be on it? I know Commissioner Mojo mentioned fourteen, but each dispute would have a three-member board. And there were some concerns about, well, might, might that member from that entity be partial to what claims might happen in that area? But that would be in the southern embankment area. The, the fact of the matter is, is any of those claims, that person would not even be eligible to serve on the three-member committee. So, so they can, they could be on it for, for other claims, but nothing within their area. And, and that's, that's written into the dispute resolution policy, so. So more to come. We'll see what happens on that. It's been, you know, it was tabled as, as suggested. So then on Thursday morning, we had the solid waste advisory committee. I think there's been a good discussion on that. I'm not going to go into it anymore. We had the West Central Regional Juvenile Meeting and the, the big item was the budget proposal for, for two thousand and twenty-two. And we did approve the recommendation moving forward. And, and we were able to, within that process, we did authorize the credit of one million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand from two thousand and twenty that were revenues over expenditures to help reduce everybody's, every member's rate for two thousand and twenty-two. And so with that, Clay County's number, after the credit, the credit for Clay County was three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And so the amount, Steve, that will need to be budgeted for, for our share of the regional facility is seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. I'm not exactly sure how that compares with two thousand and twenty-one, but those numbers are here somewhere. For the sake of time, I got to move on. We had the M C C J P A aboard and we approved four appraisals. And we approved two housing differ, differential payment appraisals. And then at that same day, that afternoon, we had the diversion authority meeting. And we talked about the dispute resolution board being tabled. And we have the communications plan with the Red River Valley Alliance Group that's going to come in August. And there also, there was some discussion regarding M State and the apprenticeship programs that through the P three contract, fifteen percent of that, of, of that contract requires apprentice work. So that's a positive thing for M State coming out of that. That's something important for this side of the river to recognize that. And then we had, on Monday afternoon, we had the construction update from, on the solid waste project. I'm not going to go into any more details on what Commissioner Mojo did. And then I did also travel last night to the meeting in Hitterdale. And I will not be able to attend that one tonight, but that concludes my report. Yes, Commissioner?
I'm sorry, I forgot one. On Wednesday, the twenty-first, I also attended the Morehead Business Association Meeting. The presentation was from the class, Cass Clay Land Trust. So I went to that because housing continues to be such a big issue throughout our region. The land trust provides qualified home buyers a subsidy to buy down the necessary mortgage and lower their monthly payments. And then in return, the ownership of the land on which the home is located is retained by the land trust and leased back to the homeowner. So what, the idea is with the land trust owning this property and entering into a long-term lease with the homeowner, it gives more people the ability to have a home. It's kind of somewhere in between a rental and a standard homeownership. It's just another tool in the chest. I thought it was an interesting concept. And they were saying that the estimated average subsidy is around fifty thousand dollars for those. And they are working throughout the Fargo, Morehead, Horace.
the Fargo, Morehead, Horace, Barnesville, Holly, the whole area here. Thank you.
All right, Steve.
Hey, Mr. Chair, in the spirit of time, I will skip all the meetings that you guys have already addressed. I'll just note that we spent a significant amount of time over the last week working with our departments and Lori with the, with, in regards to the budget. This morning, I did just hand out a summary of the twenty-twenty tax levy by funds. We're still in the process, obviously, of running through our departments. We have our, some of our biggest, biggest departments to come yet. But I wanted to get, get this information out in front of you, kind of in preparation of some additional discussions. I know the, the, the net levy increase number isn't something that you guys are going to be good with, and so we're going to continue to work, work on that. I would note, just for your information, that it doesn't, this budget does include a six hundred thousand dollar placeholder for insurance increases, fifty, five hundred thousand dollars in step increases, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in new operational costs brought on by the government center and the DMV locations. And it does include the five, five hundred thousand dollar bond payment on behalf of our capital improvement fund that this board has approved. So we did just get our, our county program aid. It's by statute, it's required to be here by August one. We did get that yesterday. We got a little increase over twenty-twenty-one. And again, the net levy increase, or new construction increases is in that range where we've been consistent, one point two eight percent. Again, just wanted to get this information. There's, there'll be a more of a formal, formal process as we, as we vet through the remaining, remaining departments, but wanted to get this information to you guys. And just two other things. If you know behind Darren, this past, this past summer, we went out on a road tour, and, and part of our road tour was, was a tour from Chris Bockard from the FM Diversion. During that, that session, he handed out a really useful map to kind of talk about where the projects from the diversion are going to be in what year. We worked with GIS to kind of upgrade that, and so that was in the back of the boardroom. And then one thing I did fail to mention today, when we talked about honoring our employees, again, just a reminder, we are going to be having a, a Clay County appreciation picnic sponsored by this board and our management team on August twenty-fourth, kind of as a delayed celebration for all the great work they've done. And that concludes my report. We're done.